I'm going to call the Library Board of Trustees regular meeting to order at 7:02 on January 14th, 2021. Wow. And then just to remind everybody pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920, issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020, the regular meeting of the Library Board of Trustees for January 14th, 2021, will be conducted remotely and held by video conference. And to ensure the health and safety of the public, by limiting human contact, the council chambers will not be open for the meeting. Trustees will be participating remotely and will not be physically present in the council chambers. And then to maximize public safety while maintaining transparency and public access, members of the public can observe the meeting via Zoom in one of the three methods below. So there's links to join us. And I don't think we have any. Sean, do I know if there's other public participants or does it matter?
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. Okay. All right.
And Annie just replied that she'll be logging in in about five minutes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sean, did we have any general public comment?
No public comments.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and what should we, should I do a row, should we do the roll call and then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bianca Richards.
Yep, present.
David Ewens.
Here.
Dr. Malina.
Present.
Thank you.
And we haven't been appointed a council liaison yet. And but Mayor Diana Mahmoud is sitting in as a visitor. Is that correct?
You're on mute, Diane.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to make all of the commissions as mayor, just to say hello and thank you for your service. But I do intend to reappoint myself as council liaison, so I'll be back.
Good.
Great. Thank you so much. Good news. Good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
And and the staff that are present are Kathy and Sean, Kathy Billings, library director, and Sean Fay, administrative secretary. And I don't think we have any moving on to the presentations. We don't have any.
And here comes Annie.
Nope. Get her set up here. Hi, Annie. Welcome. I think she, yeah, there she is. Hi, Annie. Welcome. Happy New Year, everybody. Happy New Year again, everybody. And I think Sean told us that there was no public comments.
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll move on to our action items. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes of December 10th, 2020?
Yes.
Are there any?
I'll move approval.
Okay, is there a second? Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion to approve of the minutes of December 10th by Dr. Malino and a second by Annie Chang. And all in favor to approve of the minutes?
Aye. Yeah.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the minutes of December 10th have been approved. And our next action item is, and I'm, hopefully you all got a chance to look at the the work plan that Kathy and Sean sent us. And is there any discussion, any comments or concerns about this?
Would you like me to share my screen so that the public can see it if in fact anyone is ever?
Thank you. Good idea. Thank you, Kathy.
Just put it up briefly just so that they get a chance to see it. Can everybody see that?
Yeah, that's a good clear picture.
Okay.
So the highlighted portions in yellow are things that were added?
Added or changed. Yes. The main, the main thing was we wanted to make sure we we captured the idea of having pandemic preparedness response kind of plan. So that was added here. And then I adjusted a couple of dates just based on talking with staff and thinking about what's, what's feasible.
Well, I'll move acceptance of the work plan.
Is there a second on that or? Do we have a second? I'll second it so I can second it. So so it's been moved in second for the Library Board of Trustees, our 2021 work plan. Is there any though discussions or comments or questions about this?
Madam Chair, I do have a question. You know, I was council liaison for a number of years and there was a fundraising component regarding that was anticipated to take place through the foundation. And it's not on here. I'm wondering if that was considered.
I mean, I can speak to that a little bit and then others can as well. But I can't remember, Diana. Where we ended up is that the 21st Century Committee for the Library falls under the Friends of the South Pasadena Public Library. So it's really to some extent in their hands to start trying to move it forward. And I think that because of the pandemic, it definitely has not been on their to-do list. And I think that Ellen might be able to speak to this as as well in terms of who's incoming on their board and whether those folks have an interest in working on that. And then the library board can talk about how they see their role. I mean, definitely, I think that the hope, the hope is that, you know, there'd be liaison from the library board to that committee. But it's really, I think, in the Friends' hands to to a large extent now to start moving it forward.
I can speak to that, and I think David could chime in. I think at a trustee meeting, it was the trustees that removed it from their kind of work plan because nothing was really going forward. I know that there was money that was going to be put aside. It is a committee of the Friends and we were really excited that we restructured our board and we actually had a fundraising person. But that person now has has resigned because they're taking another position, I guess, on a commission. So we, we did have something in place and then and found out this week that that's not going to happen. So not necessarily meaning that the 21st Century, but it was just to get the ball rolling again. But there has to be a work plan and funds from the city. I mean, basically, that's what it is for. It's basically like a capital campaign.
Now, Ellen, isn't, uh, next week is the Friends' meeting, isn't it, to go over the new slate of officers?
Yes.
So will the, a fundraising position then be backup for nomination?
It's vacant at the moment. Yes. So I will send an updated proposed slate.
Okay, okay.
Um, just out of curiosity, just out of curiosity, was the fundraiser Dean Servin?
Yes.
Um, well, I'm pleased to tell you that Dean is my recommended appointee to the library board. And that was part of the reason that I thought he would be a strong candidate to the Library Board of Trustees. I just am concerned about it falling off the radar if it's not included in some capacity, even if it's just an oversight of the Friends Committee.
So
I just don't want it to get lost.
I don't understand the relationship between the Friends of the South Pasadena Library and the library board. It's a 501(c)(3).
Yes.
It's an independent organization.
Yes.
So what is our relationship?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking somebody because I'm relatively new. I mean, I haven't been on the the board that long and all this happened before.
I think, Mario, that I would view it as a cooperative kind of relationship. And there's a lot of history surrounding the, the what started out as a foundation. And over time, you know, the, the library board was the driving force behind this. And with the recognition that if it didn't have support from the Friends, it wasn't going to be going anywhere, quite frankly. And at some point during the whole discussion of this foundation, it became called the 21st Century Committee for the Library. Myself, Steve, and Alan Guttum were, were people who were driving, and Kathy as well. And we did a lot of work on it and then we basically turned that over to the Friends. So the Friends were going to take that forward and continue to drive it. It is, it was seen as a very important aspect to have this 21st Century Committee for the Library to handle major capital projects, essentially.
And so we, do we have any kind of memo of understanding or any kind of written agreement between the, the library and the Friends?
For, for that particular project, that particular item?
Yeah, I mean, my, my only experience with anything like this, I was on the board of the aquarium. In fact, I still am on the board of the aquarium in Long Beach, which is a 501(c)(3), which has an agreement with the city of Long Beach to operate the aquarium. So I'm just wondering how this works. Do we have an agreement with, with the Friends? Do we, I mean, or is it just kind of?
We, we had, I'm sorry to interrupt. On the specific topic of the foundation, yes, we have an agreement with, with, with the Friends that we were told to the Friends to basically carry it forward. And the other thing that we committed to the Friends was, oh, I can't, I think it was $4,000 seed money to be used for outside consulting to be taken from the estate funds to pay for that. So they would, they were, we were willing to fund a, an outside consultant to, to help them get it going with an understanding that we would have some level of oversight on that as well to make sure that those funds were, were being handled appropriately because we were paying for that.
And when did all that happen?
Oh, since I became a board member. Over the last three years. And even be, even before I joined.
Yeah, two or three years ago this happened.
But it really was put on hold because it involved the city and what the city wanted to do and how much money the city could put into, you know.
Ellen, I would disagree with that, Ellen. It was, I don't, I don't know it was put on, on that because the city had never committed, the city had never committed to any funding for it.
No, no, I don't mean that. I don't mean that. But it meant, I mean, we can't start something that we don't know.
Oh.
Maybe Kathy can explain it a little better than I can.
What still needs to be identified is the project.
Right.
Yeah, to be funded, for the capital project to be funded.
Yeah, and I think, I think David summarized it really well. And then I think that is the, the cooperative relationship there is that the library board and library staff need to think about what projects or for what purpose would these funds be raised? And, and then help the Friends to create their, you know, the proposal that then they take out to fundraisers. But I think, you know, the board doesn't have any actual oversight over the committee. They're, they're there to support and help and perhaps, you know, play a role as a, as a, as a fundraiser or making contacts. I mean, those pieces have to be determined and those are on a case by case, you know, if an individual wants to participate in that way. But, but it's really now the Friends entity. And as far as a true MOU with the Friends, we really don't. The Friends have bylaws that, you know, dictate how the funds they raise will be used and what their purpose is. But probably we would want to think about what other things we need to have in place. And that's the reason that the board designated that $4,000 is so that we could work with a consultant to help us put this structure in place.
So it, it sounds to me like the mayor is correct. We probably ought to have something in our strategic plan that says something about how we're going to work with the Friends and coordinate activities towards fundraising.
So maybe we can, if we want to make a motion, I can, what I would say is let's table it and I'll, I'll change it and we can vote again on the work plan in February because we don't have to turn our work plan in to the city until after our February meeting. And also Dean would be at our February meeting, hopefully. So that would give him a chance to also participate and vote on the work plan. But we can certainly add something to that effect and you guys can give me guidance about how you want that to read.
Yeah, and then next week, the new slate of officers for the, the Friends. And I think there's going to be hopefully some more people that are going to come back who have had some experience with the 21st Century fundraising. So when the Friends gets in place, I think that's going to then help us for our February meeting because then I think we'll be, there'll be more of us who can communicate together on this.
And I think, I think it is a good idea to have something in the work plan. I think it just wasn't on our minds because
Yeah.
of the pandemic and uncertainty about the Friends and who their, their board was going to be. I think that it's a good idea to probably cap that somehow.
Yeah, because I distinctly remember the trustees and all asking it to be kind of removed and tabled for a bit. Because Alan Jutsey was the driving force behind this. He's where I had all the meetings with. I know we had identified some of our large potential donors. And when we couldn't come up with a project or, because they were the driving force, I can give you a little bit more of a history. They wanted to start a foundation. And every year I attend, serving with a purpose, which is librarians, trustees, whatever, and felt really with a library, a city with one library to have a foundation and, and, and a Friends. It just seems like we're pulling from the same. So that's why it was going to go under the Friends as a committee. And it's still basically there and that's what we were hoping and why a new board position is actually was or is fundraiser. And that's what that would fall under. So we were hoping to move forward with that and we were, we still will. We just need to find somebody else to chair it.
Mario, to provide a bit more background, the the precedent for having this capital fundraising arm nested within the Friends is Restoration Concert Committee. And so it was anticipated that the, that the, what I'll call foundation-like, because it's not separate, would function similar to the Restoration Concerts Committee. I'll also note that back in 2019, when I was still liaison, I do recall that the trustees did identify projects. That took some time to do, but we, we do have that. It was at first fairly expansive. We winnowed it down. I believe that went to city council. And unfortunately, I think the pandemic really really delayed the serious start of this. But I'm hoping that we can do it because there's quite, the library's needs are substantial. And the Friends do an awesome job of providing really important and necessary assistance to the library with regard to operations. But it doesn't, it doesn't address capital. And the model for us was the remarkable renovation that occurred within San Marino and how they literally transformed what was a very pedestrian library into something which is, it's quite extraordinary. Obviously, we don't have that kind of ambition. We don't have those kinds of donors, but there's still an awful lot of needs. There's still a lot that can be done.
Well, I think it sounds like then we're going to table this for right now. So Kathy, we can put this, rework it into the 2021 work plan. And then next week again with the, the Friends nominations and will then plan for the February meeting to relook into this.
And if there's, if there is something, Kathy, about what the goals or plans were, I would like to see that since all this happened.
I actually had a history that I presented to the board some time ago. And I, short, if you don't have it, I can send it back to you and it gives a by quarter or general timeframe. And the, what went to the council was, and I'll quote it here, "The staff input from LBT and Fenton of the library recommend two major projects as the focus of the initial funding efforts for the 21st Century Committee. The library first floor interior design remodel, including lighting, electrical, flooring, decor, shelving, and furnishing. Two, a radio frequency identification system, including tags for streamlining materials, handling, including blah, blah, blah." So, so, so that actually went to council was, it wouldn't have been approved. It would have, was, went there for information, I think, purposes. And, and also there was other times we went to council and along the way to talk about what we were doing. And then I, I think it's probably true that it sort of has dropped either way when Alan left and Steve left and the pandemic came along.
Okay, thank you.
So we can, we could definitely send you that, Mario. And I was going to suggest that we put the, this as a discussion item just because Dean will be on in February. Annie probably hasn't been a big part of these discussions because she joined us last year and I don't think we spent a lot of time on this last year. So maybe we should have a discussion next time and we can talk about those priorities that we did, you know, take to council and whether those are still our priorities or whether we have different priorities and also just sort of get a handle on what, what are the next steps and what, what role or, or what can the, the board do to help the Friends, if, if at all?
And Kathy, I would like to add as a discussion item so that we have it formally on the agenda. But also if there's any best practices on responsibilities for trustees versus a Friends organization as far as who raises funds, I think it'd be really helpful to understand.
Isn't my understanding, I could be wrong, the reason it came to the Friends because the trustees can't raise funds?
That's what I was assumed. I had heard that. I think you and Kathy, Kathy, we had talked about this before. I mean, I understand we probably need it as a discussion item on the agenda to kind of notify that we're having this whole discussion. But I think those kind of questions, Ellen, is something that I'm curious about.
Okay.
Okay, good.
There's no legal issue with regard to the trustees raising Friends, but there was, this was the subject of a really long discussion that went back and forth between the trustees and the Friends. But there was concern, as, as Ellen earlier described, if you have two separate groups raising money for the library, it could be confusing. So ultimately, when the Friends expressed interest in hosting this group as basically it's kind of a subcommittee, but it's, it's not named as such, just as the Restoration Concerts Committee really functions through the Friends, but it, it has its own independent identity. That was the precedent and the model for this committee.
Well, it's, it's great that we have a historical knowledge amongst us because, yeah, it's, it, and I think, yeah, Annie and Mario, I think we can forward you a lot of our past notes and stuff from Brendan Duratt and Alan Jutsey because they had a lot of information. And of course, Dave, you have a lot of information too. So we'll forward that all to everybody.
Wrote a very comprehensive history summary that gets it all in a nutshell. So, and our, and our new board member will hopefully be appointed at the council meeting next week so we can share that information when I reach out to him as well.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. All right, so our, moving on here, our next action item is the election of the 2021 officers. And, um, so, um, I'm the, for this, the slate of officers, I think I've spoken to a few of you. We're looking at the president, vice president, and secretary. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and I, I am fine going one more year as president. I've been president one year and so I'm getting the hang of it. So I'm, I'm okay going with another year. And I think, Dave, did you say that you would continue as vice president?
Unless someone else wants to take the position, yeah.
Right, because Dave's got a lot of history. And, and then Annie, I think I, I'm, I think I reached out to you about continuing on as secretary?
Yes, that's fine.
Is that any any changes, any other officers want to?
Just a slight point of order here. We, we, we actually still have a proposal on the, on the floor unless it's been accepted, rejected, or decided to withdraw it from Mario to approve the, the work plan as written.
I thought we tabled that.
We tabled it? Okay, I missed it, Mario. I'm sorry.
And we tabled it to my next meeting.
Kathy's going to re, rework in the fundraising bit, David, and then we'll bring it back for February. And then we'll have our new, our new member. And then, of course, again, the Friends is doing it for next week. So any other input about the slate of officers that I have proposed? So again, it would be, I, I, I can do one, one more year, 20, you know, 2021, 2022 as president. I would love to have, you know, if Dave is willing to be vice president for the year. And then Annie, continue on as secretary. So do I, so how do, how do we?
I think you just need a motion to approve that slate.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve that slate?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, so it's been moved in second for the slate of officers, as I had mentioned. Do I need to repeat that again, Sean or Kathy?
No, I haven't. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody. And thank you for your, I guess, your confidence in me as your president again. And you know what? And thank you, everybody. You're all very, very helpful with me because I, I, I'm new at this and I do make mistakes and I do welcome everybody's kind of input. I appreciate it. I, I think we all get along really well, so thank you. Okay, now moving on to discussion items.
Madam President?
Yes.
All, all action items require a
We'll vote. Sorry. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, everybody. So, um, so we'll go ahead and take a vote on the slate of officers for 2021. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Madam President?
We have to have a
It's under the Brown Act. When you meet virtually like this, you need to do roll call.
Roll call. Okay, so Sean, Sean, does the roll call vote? Yeah.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Annie Chang.
Hi.
Dr. Malina.
Yes.
David Ewens.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Diana, for bringing that up. And, okay, on to the discussion items. The library operations update, Kathy?
Yeah, so I want to share a few things with you guys on a couple of different topics. So just to give you some updates about what's happening at the library. So Support Services is very focused right now on the fine free implementation. We, last month, the last time we met, shared our schedule for that implementation. And we're a little bit behind, not behind schedule, but our schedule has, has shifted a bit because our vendor, Cersei Dynix, couldn't get us in their consulting calendar until mid-February. So we're working on the things that we can work on now. We've done outreach to about 400 borrowers who have items that will go into who have items that will go into lost status when we do flip the switch. So outreach to them to encourage them to bring those materials back so that that doesn't happen. But, but really until we meet with Cersei Dynex in mid-February to work on their fine free piece, they basically help us. All the systems pieces, it's, it's such a common thing that different libraries do that they basically have a package of consulting services that they give for free to help us work through all the pieces that have to happen on the backend. So that's scheduled for February 19th is our first meeting with them and I don't think it's going to take terribly long. So at this point, I think that we'll probably be able to kind of officially start making the change in March. For customers, it's not making any difference because we haven't been charging fines since March and we also haven't been billing for lost items at all. So for them, there's no change. The change is when we flip the switch and when we flip the switch, things will start getting billed if they are lost. So that's where we are with that. We have been working on, we have a print piece that's coming from the printer. But again, we didn't want to advertise it too widely when we're, when we're as far away as we are from actually turning it on because then we'll have people asking, I thought you said that, you know, we were going to get billed and I didn't get a bill. So we, we're going to wait till we're closer to, to flipping the switch. But otherwise that's, that's going well. We're thrilled that obviously the, the council approved that and excited to see that in place. I think it's going to make a lot of people very happy. Let's see, circulation statistics, just quickly, we've pulled 52,000 holds since June. So a lot of people still using the library. I would say holds have been down a little bit in the last few weeks, which is I think a good thing because I think it's because people are staying home like they are supposed to. But we are still very busy with holds and with materials matchmaker services. So that's great. Public services, the library app, which we've been working on also with Cersei Dynex. We basically have it ready to go, but we have one last meeting with Cersei Dynex to go over a few questions that we have and to get their expertise to tweak a couple of things. And that meeting is next week. So I think that it's likely that we'll be able to, to launch the app. Not next week, but maybe the week after. And so we need to work on the press and the publicity and the outreach around that. But it's really nice, really nice app. I think people will be very happy with it and it too got a little bit delayed because of Cersei Dynex, I think. And then the staff have been working on collection development guidelines. One of the policies that we need you guys to review is the collection development policy. So the policy is a little bit higher level and then the guidelines are those things that the staff actually use to make their decisions about what they're selecting for the collection. So they've been working on guidelines for all of the different parts of the collection and we're close to having those ready and we're hoping that then the policy can come to you guys in, in February. And let's see what else. I guess that's it for, for public services. Quick update on local history and what's going on there. Olivia Radbill, our local history librarian, applied for a grant which we received. It's a California Revealed Grant, which is from the state library. It's an initiative that helps libraries digitize, preserve and make archival materials accessible. So we are going to be with them digitizing all the city directories from 1903 to 1931. So that'll be great. They will be, you know, keyword searchable and, and we'll be able to make those available because those are all obviously in the, in the public domain. So they'll work on those and then they're also going to do the high school yearbook from 1900 to 1924. So we'll have the high school yearbooks digitized for that same public domain period. So that's happening and that's exciting that they're going to do that for us. We don't actually get any funds from them, but they do all of the work for free. So that's fantastic. And then also just an update, I think I've mentioned before that we've been very slowly working toward an agreement with the California Digital Newspapers Project to have our old newspapers rescanned in grayscale. So the Friends quite a few years ago spent a lot of money to scan our microfilm. But at the time it was scanned in black and white, which is not ideal for digitizing materials. It's not good for optical character recognition and being able to actually search the, the scanned material. So they will rescan all of those. We just sent them off last week. And the agreement with them, it's actually kind of a three-way agreement. Ancestry.com, which is the, the genealogy research, you know, monolith that kind of runs that whole market. They are actually partnering with the California Digital Newspaper Project. So the way that it works is Ancestry does the digitization. They get semi-exclusive access to material for a period of time. We have access to it on site. We have like 20 simultaneous licenses that we can use on site. And then I think it's three years. After three years, the whole thing goes to the California Digital Newspaper Collection so that it's wide open for any member of the public to use. And I don't have all the titles handy, but it's obviously the South Pasadena Review, but there's a couple of other, you know, little bits and pieces newspapers from the 1880s, 1890s. So that's really a really big deal. I mean, this was a project that, that started in 2014, 15, and then it kind of got derailed a little bit. The South Pasadena Review changed ownership and we never got the, the newspapers online and available. So this is a great way to get that done and it's, it's, it's a really good thing. So Olivia worked on that and we're excited that's going to be happening. And then I also wanted to just mention that you may remember that we did a COVID experiences living history project and asked people to submit their experiences of COVID. So that online exhibit has now been published. So that's on our website if you want to take a look at that. We actually had an intern that worked with Olivia and she put that together and she did a nice job. Children's Services, quick update, the Take and Make craft kits are very, very popular. We're going to be doing two a month now and we do about 100 kits each time and they go like hotcakes. So those have been great and people are enjoying those. So we'll continue with that. We'll be doing our bookmark contest. Last year we didn't get to do our bookmark contest, which is really fun and, and one of our favorite things. But we just didn't do it because of the pandemic. So that is going to be February 1st to March 1st. And the theme for summer reading, so we always do the bookmark relative to the coming summer reading program. The theme next year is reading colors your world. So hopefully we'll get some good bookmarks from different age groups and then we get those printed and, and pass those out. Summer reading program planning is in full swing because now's the time. We really start getting that going now. I wanted to announce, which I think I've mentioned before, that SPUSD now has a digital, an ebook and e-audiobook platform that's affiliated with our platform, which is Overdrive. The platform for schools is called Sora. But Overdrive, because it's basically the same company, is able to on the backend give the Sora people access to our collections. So we just made a tutorial. The, the high school basically just launched this with their students. And I know the librarian there has, has started to try to get them on board and get them to download the app and start using the collections. So basically the high school has its own collections, but the students now also have access to all of our collections and they don't need their library card. They just need their student ID. So Sora is, is run and they're, they're validated by student ID, not anything to do with the library. So that's exciting and we'll be able to kind of track those statistics and see how many, what's getting used from our collection by the high school. So that'll be great. Tab, the Teen Advisory Board, our sixth cohort started, I think this week. I think their first meeting was this week. Maybe it's next week. But we have three new students and six returning students. It's kind of a small group relative to last cohort. I don't know why. But, but it's nice to get some new students and it's nice to have some returning students because they can kind of keep the continuity and, and, you know, help us keep moving forward. And the last thing I'm going to let you know is that the public services team is going to be working on some research guides that are tied to the California State standards so that they can do outreach with teachers and say, you know, if you're a fourth grade teacher, I know you, you have to do, you know, meet these goals in terms of local history and try to kind of prepare some, some assistance to help teachers in meet those different standards and teaching goals. So we'll see how that goes. They're going to start, I think, with that fourth, third grade, sorry, third grade local history project and work on that first and then kind of do some outreach with teachers and figure out what other create, what other standards or topics they would like us to address for them. So that is the update, library operations. If anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Lot of, lot of things going on. You guys are.
Busy, busy. Yeah. Everybody's really busy.
Kathy, again, when do you anticipate completing the digitization of the local newspapers?
Um, I, let me, I have an email that he sent. Let me see if I can answer that accurately. We just sent them last week and he said.
That's okay. You can get back to me offline.
He says, digitization, digitization will take four to six weeks. So maybe, where are we now? Maybe like end of March?
And the ones that have already been digitized, where are they?
We have them on an external hard drive and they're also on the city servers. But they're not, I mean, we, the way that it works is if someone wants to access those, they come into the library when, when you can come into the library. And they use the, the external hard drive and we set them up on a computer. But not all of the issues are searchable. So it's, it's not very useful. You know, we had a lot of students doing Black Lives Matter research in the spring and, and, you know, you literally have to just go page by page through the paper. So I, yeah, I don't know quite what happened when they, when they digitized in black and white, but that is what happened. So this is great. We're getting them, you know, rescanned and re, rerun through the optical character recognition so that we should have really good searchable stuff. And again, the public won't be able to access those unless they're in the library. But then after, I believe it's three years, they'll be on that California Digital Newspaper project site, which is out of the, out of UC Riverside. So.
But they, they will be able to access the, the scans through ancestry.com, right?
Yes, that's, that's the reason that this, yeah. So ancestry, so ancestry, one of their subsidiaries is newspapers.com. So it's really newspapers.com. And then yes, theoretically, if you're searching ancestry, you could pull hits on this material. That's why they do this.
And thank you Friends for paying for ancestry.com. Way to go.
Yeah.
It all fits together beautifully.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a big, I mean, this is a big deal. This is a goal that will make it, I mean, and again, it's, it's only the, the public domain issues. We haven't figured out yet what to do about the, the stuff that's, that's under copyright. But, um, but at least this is a good start.
Yeah. Okay. And then I think you've got the next point also Kathy, number seven.
Item seven is to talk about COVID. As usual, we have our little COVID update. So first I want to let you know that I, I took a, the county is offering a safety compliance type training. And I took that training and that enables us to, basically we get to post a, a little certificate in the window that says that we're safe and instead of, and then we don't have to post the whole like five-page protocols. The protocols have to be on site so that people can look at them. We just, we did the protocols because the original protocols were from June and, and there've been many updates since June. The latest version of the library protocol is from early December. So we just completed that, reposted it, made sure that we are on track. There were a few things that have changed that we need to change. We need to do some cleaning more frequently. We had to put up some new signage, just a few things that we need to be compliant with. But basically we, we are compliant and doing well, I think, with that. We, sorry, go to my next page. I, I think our biggest issue right now is thinking about the, the infection rates and the risk for staff here at work because there's quite a few of us working on site. At any given time, there's anywhere from 10 to 15 people and obviously we're, we're, we're spread out, but it's, it's a lot of people crossing paths. And in the last few weeks, we've had more close calls and, and, you know, people having to quarantine and, and things like that. So Barb and Maida and I met to talk about what might we be able to do to mitigate some of this risk. And we have a proposal that I went over with the staff this week and talked to the city manager, Sean Joyce, about this week. And he's in, he, he's in support of this proposal. So our proposal, our, our biggest, our biggest place where we have risk is, is in processing of the holds in the morning. So it takes quite a few people to do that. And right now what happens is we've got three, maybe four people working on that. And then we also opened the door to the public for takeout at 11:00. So starting at 11:00, we end up with four people, someone working takeout, lots of people interacting and moving around and it, it doesn't feel safe. And so what we would like to do is open at one o'clock every day for takeout instead of 11:00. So it basically is just slightly limiting people's timeframe that they can pick up. I don't think it will really have a very big impact on people, you know? We have enough hours after work. I don't, I don't think we're, it, it will be a problem for people, but I think it will make a much safer work site for the staff. And so that's our proposal. Like I said, I talked to the city manager and it was too late, obviously, to put this as any kind of action item for you. But I don't know that you need to take action. I think, you know, with the city has its ordinance, you know, it is what it is. So that's what we're proposing. And, and the good news is that it's easy to notify people because the people that are using the library and using takeout, they literally get a phone call every time they need to pick up their items. So it's easy to just simply tell them, you know, we don't have to do a big blitz and worry about people not being aware. The people that need to be aware will, will get a personal phone call essentially. But obviously we will do publicity about this. But that's, that's kind of our, our baby step to try to do something to mitigate the risk short of closing altogether, which some libraries have done. Glendale closed, Altadena's closed, closed curbside and everything. I mean, they're nothing. So no curbside at Glendale, no curbside at Altadena, Moore Park stopped curbside, Thousand Oaks stopped curbside. The Los Angeles Public Library Librarians Union is, is making a big push to try to get LAPL to stop curbside.
What is, Kathy, what is the rationale for stopping the curbside pickup? Because it seems to me that there's minimal contact with the public when doing that.
It's, it's having the, it's the staff in the building. It's, it takes a lot of bodies to do, to do curbside. So my understanding, for example, at LAPL, they've had branches that have had to stop because the staff are all in quarantine. You know, they don't even have enough staff to run the service. And that's what we're afraid could happen here. You know, I, I, again, I, we don't want to stop takeout at all. I don't think it's necessary, but we also don't want to not be cautious and then have, have an exposure and then we do all have to quarantine and then we do have to stop curbside because there's not enough people to do the work. So yeah, that's why curbside is, is being stopped is just because having this, that many people on site. And again, some libraries have had some close calls. People have been, have been sick. I think some are more conservative than others. I've also heard, I, I actually reached out to all the other directors last week just to kind of get an update from them about how's it going, what's happening? And I got a really good update back from Alhambra because they, as you know, have been allowing the, the public in 20% capacity for 30 minutes each at a time. And, you know, they haven't had any exposure. They're very diligent, the same way we are with wearing their masks and all of their surface cleaning and all of that. So that's really reassuring that, that, you know, surface cleaning and all of that. So that's really reassuring that, that, you know, people can be in these spaces together. Um, i- i- and if you're, if you're doing the right thing, you're likely to not, um, to not be exposed. But again, our, our weak point is definitely that morning time and we have too many people in that same area together. And it's making staff nervous, um, understandably. So, so I think that that's the best thing for us. Is if we can just eliminate the need to have those couple of extra people there from 11:00 to 1:00, um, we can really, eliminate a lot of, of the risk that, that I think.
Kathy, you still proposing the same level of staff coming in or you're reducing the number of staff that come in early in the morning?
No, they would just not be all clustered together in that, working on those same, um, functions. You know, when we put together our original plan, our reintroduction of services plan, the idea was, you know, try to minimize, um, the number of people overlapping and using the same workstations, you know, really trying to, to, to have people work on one thing for a longer time. Um, and so.
So is the, is the issue sharing workstations or is it?
We don't share workstations. It's just working close together. I mean, again, you're six feet apart, is, is the recommendation and you're not, and, and 15 minutes. But these are people who are, 15 feet apart for two hours. So I'm, we're not very comfortable with that. So this allows us to, to spread out the, the workflow, the process over more time before we open the door to the public. It just allows us to, to reduce the kind of congestion around that particular workflow.
Okay, so, so the workflow has to change to achieve your objective. O- otherwise, you, you didn't, it's, nothing's been achieved.
Well, there's, there's the staff that would normally be serving the public at the takeout door are not there. They're doing, they're in their other place where they're isolated, working on whatever they're working on.
And they are working, and, and what, what would they be working on instead of doing the, uh, uh, check out, you know, the takeaway?
On, it depends on who they are. They're, they're either going to be shelving, uh, doing the book drop, checking things in. Um, working on projects. If it's a clerk, they have lots of other responsibilities related to the collections. I mean, if you, if you picture, um, the main floor.
Yeah.
And we have, let's say we have for sure three people working, um, close to the circulation desk, plus a librarian, probably. We don't, for sure, there's a librarian. And then we have somebody at takeout. And then somebody comes to the door at takeout and says, oh, I have a question. And the person that can answer that question is somebody else entirely. So they have to go get a supervisor and the supervisor comes out. We now have one, two, uh, we have six people on the floor, plus probably aides who are a little bit separated, but it, it gets very congested with, with serving the public, at the same time that we're trying to pull 300 holds and get them bundled and checked out and filed for pickup. Um, doing that at the same time as, as serving the people who are coming up to the takeout window is, I think, putting staff at risk.
And then this would be, uh, Monday through Thursday, uh.
It would be all, but just to, I, I, to keep it simple for the public, um, you know, right now, we open at 11:00 Monday through Thursday and 10:00 Friday and Saturday. But we would just do 1:00 Monday through Saturday.
Yeah, make it more consistent. Okay.
It's, I think, too confusing to, to tell them. Yeah, just keep it simple.
I think Kathy, that's your whole, um, understanding of what could be at risk if you don't take some precautions right now, is really understandable. So I think whatever you need to do, whether it's reducing hours more or anything else, I think the public just values having anything for takeout at any point. So I think keeping that safe is really important. So, um, you know, this is just to get all of our takes. That, that would be mine. Since I know you'll be able to make that decision on your own.
Thank you. Yeah. People are very, um, we got a really nice thank you note that someone sent us. You know, people are definitely very appreciative that we are able to provide access to materials. And I don't think they're going to have a real issue with, with it being, you know, that they can't come between 11:00 and 1:00. I don't think it's really an issue because they, they do worry about the staff. You know, they do ask, are you, you know, are you guys okay? Are you safe? So. Right. That's what we're thinking. We're going to, we're going to try to implement, obviously, um, Monday is a holiday and we need to get some things in place. But, uh, time is of the essence. There's no point in doing it if we wait a long time. It's now that, you know, the infection rate is so high and it doesn't seem to be getting any lower. Today was almost 18,000 new cases and, um, and like I said, I, I think we're all noticing a lot more, uh, close calls and exposures that people are having in their personal lives, even if they're being very careful in their personal lives. And it just takes, you know, one, one inadvertent person potentially to, to come to work and, and, make, you know, have a problem.
Well, I, I think, yeah, I think you, well, I, I, I'll talk for myself. I know you've got my support because, you know, you know, I, I want to help the staff to be, to stay safe. And I want to be able to keep the library open because I would really hate to see somebody, get infected and then have to have all of the services closed. So I'd rather just do what we can, you know, to keep the services open. So, you know, you have, I think it's, I think it's a fine plan.
I mean, and honestly, we really are, are very, very, um, compliant with all of the rules. Everyone is really good, really careful, doing the right thing. The only place that, you know, again, Barb and Maida and I met and, and thought about where, you know, we'd gotten some feedback from staff about that time of day, and their concerns about it, um, and thinking about, you know, what can we do? What would make a difference? And, and that really was the one thing we thought that, that would make a difference. That would allow us to, uh, minimize the risk and, and keep, keep that social, the, the physical distancing that, that we need to be keeping. Um, so, yeah, that's, that's, that's that. And that's really my, the, I don't have anything else, uh, COVID-related necessarily. I think, um, that's really it. That's really it.
Okay. All right. All right, well, let's, um, moving on then to communications, um, uh, I, I have no communications as board president, um, and we can just go through the, uh, the board members. Uh, Dave, do you have any comments or communications?
Get, get, just an observation that I'd like to share for, uh, down the road a little piece. Um, over the holiday season, I had an opportunity to take my granddaughters, uh, to Barnes and Noble. And they're, they're ages nine and 11. And, and this was up in Northern California. And I was just struck by how important it is to that age group to actually pick up books, look at them. And, and we spent almost two hours while they went around and just made a selection of one book each. You know, and then, then I said, well, let's, let's make a note of the ones that you also would like. And we'll order them from your library and I'll show you how to order them from your library and so on, you know, because they had takeout there as well. But it, I think children of that age group and, and possibly even younger and Annie can maybe, you know, having younger kids, have the need to actually physically look at the, at the books to be able to make a selection. So somewhere when you start to think about opening up, the consideration may be given somehow to, to handle that if possible.
Yeah, it will be.
This is all Kathy.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see how, how opening up looks. It's sort of, um, you know, our plan is, was to sort of open, things incrementally and, and, uh, you know, that we could do children's browsing by appointment. But I'm not sure what the vaccine, how this is going to look. It may be that we literally go from, not being able to have people in person to just having everybody in person if, if the vaccine is rolling out the way we would like it to. So, yeah, we're, we're very aware and, and sensitive to the idea that, you know, this is terrible for kids, that they can't be in the library and, um, you know, select their own materials. I mean, they, they do, you know, we do materials matchmaker. A lot of kids use it. A lot of parents use it with their kids. So they do get to do some, you know, selection of their own that's, that's interactive a little bit. But, yeah, there, it's really problematic. And so, yeah, we'll see. I think we just kind of have to wait and see what happens with the vaccine. And whether we are at a point where we do start doing, uh, browsing by appointment or whether we just are open again, um, depending on how that looks.
Anything else, Dave?
No, no, that was it.
Um, I'm just going across my screen here. Um, Mario, any comments?
In response to Dave's comment, I do not find that the need to handle books diminishes with age.
It's the grownups who complain.
I'll take you to Barnes and Noble.
Yeah, the kids actually don't really complain. The grownups are like, they're the ones who are, wish they could come and look at the new bookshelf. And they're, yeah, they want to be here in person, some of them.
Uh, was that it, Mario?
That's it.
Okay, Annie.
Continue the thread. My kids have done a great job of finding the books or we find something else. And so, you know, I just, again, I'm so appreciative, just the opportunity to be able to do, um, the drive-by pickup, book takeout. I mean, I think any way we can keep that going is super important. But thank you. That's all.
And, uh, Di- Diana, did you have any other comments?
No, other than I'm very pleased to be back to return as liaison and I definitely look forward to working with you all in this upcoming year.
Good, thank you. And, uh, Friends of the Library representative, is that, uh?
That's me.
Yeah, that's you, Ellen. I always get that in the liaison. I always, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, so just a couple of things. Uh, you know, we had our emergency fund, um, fundraiser. And basically, um, the amount we raised so far was $14,979. So that was just a simple email ask. And, uh, we've raised that amount of money. So thank you to anybody who contributed to that. Um, our membership campaign went out and I don't have a total yet. Um, but I know that, uh, Laura Kiefer, who is the chair, sent me a, a text with like a stack of envelopes. That was huge. Did you see it, Kathy?
I, I'm the one who puts it out for Rose. I can't believe how many envelopes. It's, every day, there's this many. So.
So we'll, um, probably have a report, um, next week. Um, there was a Giving Tuesday. And I shared the Friends as what I wanted to raise money for, for, just on my personal Facebook page. And we raised $1,808 from that. So thank you again to any of those that may have contribute to my, uh, page. And, um, so that's pretty exciting. Um, as you mentioned, we have our annual meeting next Thursday at 1:00 PM via Zoom. Unfortunately, um, it's Zoom still, but, uh, we will be voting on our budget. Um, our slate of officers, uh, the new board officers. And we did, um, a bylaws update, making some changes so that our, um, our mission statement really, um, matches what we were doing. So we changed that. Um, we've done all new board descriptions and I'm pretty excited that you'll see with the new positions. It, it reflects more what we're doing. And that's why I mentioned before, the fundraising is going to be a key component to the Friends. But just other things. So I'm really excited about that. Going back to the 21st century, I pulled up our policies and it's in our policies. Um, so I can share what the relationship basically is and what we had agreed upon, um, when we had our meeting. So if you want, I can send that to, uh, maybe Sean and he can send it out.
Send it to Sean and I, and then maybe I'll come, I'll put it all together with.
Sure. So, and when you think about, um, uh, your discussion in February, because I will not be your liaison for anymore. You, in the past, had a trustee who was a 21st century liaison to the Friends. So I don't know if that's, I mean, I'm just throwing that out as a discussion item for you, that, that's something you want to, to reinstate, um, that you might want to do. But, yeah, this is my last meeting, um, as the Friends president for the trustees. So I really did enjoy this, even though other people never would sign up when we were alive. This has been great and I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to represent the Friends. So thank you.
Well, and I just want to say, we, we've, uh, been very, uh, blessed, Ellen, because you, you do have a wealth of knowledge. And it helps us because, and there's a lot of consistency. But you're, you're staying with the Friends. You're, you're not.
I am staying with the Friends. Um, my position will be operations. So kind of overseeing the bigger picture, which I hope we can, you know, continue some of the things that I wanted to do and, and, and change. So, yeah. And I'll stay on as the immediate past president. We added that, um, in our bylaws.
Oh, good.
As just one of the ex officio directors to make sure that there is consistency.
Right. So we can, we can pick your brains.
Yes.
A lot more. Good.
Sally, for those that you don't know, Sally Kilby will be, um, I'm sure nobody's going to vote no. So she will be, she's the proposed, uh, uh, president and coming.
Yes. That'll, yeah, and she was, uh, and then for Annie and Mario, Sally Kilby, uh, uh, always attended the trustees' meeting. So she has a wealth of information too, kind of.
Yes.
She's on both sides, the library trustees and the Friends. So that was, it was good news to hear that.
And pretty excited that we now have created a position, um, where it's, um, like a president-elect, basically. So we have somebody in the position that can move in because we were really afraid that this year we would not have a president. So I'm really excited. I'm really excited that we have, almost everybody's new. There's basically two board members that have any knowledge. It's Kristin Dubey and I that were coming back. And so, um, I'm really excited to have new blood, um, new energy, you know, so, yeah.
And Sally was also very involved in the efforts to establish the capital fundraising. So hopefully this will be the year that we can actually get something going.
Yeah, she, um, left the Friends because it was a conflict to serve on two boards. Just like I think it's a conflict if you serve on the trustees and the Friends. And so, um, and, and when, when, basically, kind of when Alan left, it kind of died. So I was hoping she would take the fundraising position to get the 21st century movie, but that can still happen, you know? It will take us a while because I think as, as long as we're in, um, kind of a lockdown, it's, it's almost really hard to go out and really campaign super hard. So, yeah, yeah. So Sally does have a lot of knowledge about this.
And again, thank you, Ellen, for all of your work this year too, this past year. And, uh, Dave, the liaison, do you have any?
There, there was no meeting between our last board meeting and this board meeting of the Friends. So that is reported, there was no meeting.
And then while we're on this, I think, um, we forgot to talk about, uh, uh, who will the person be? The trustee liaison to the Friends? Dave, do you want to continue that? Do you want to give it to somebody else or?
It, it's 1:00 on Thursdays. So my, my schedule can work, not all of the time, but a fair amount of the time. So it makes it difficult for people who have other commitments at that particular time. But so I can continue to do it. Um, I will have to maybe from time to time call upon you, Bianca, or, or I can be the backup if someone else wants to take it.
Is there any, any interest from anybody else to be the liaison for the Friends?
Sorry, I can't take it if that's the standing time, but.
Maybe let's, let's, um, I think, you know, if Dave is available to do it, let's talk about it again. I mean, I think in the past, we've had sort of a team that if somebody can't do it, somebody else will do it. Maybe Dean would be interested. So maybe we can discuss it a little bit when Dean is on board to see if he.
Yeah. And in, and in the past, I've gone to the meetings when Dave hasn't. And I'm happy to do that too because I'm available. You know, like Dave, I'm available at 1:00 on Thursdays. Um, okay. And then back to you, Kathy, did you have any more?
I do have a few things. I, I bet you thought I was finished after the operations update, but I have a few things. Um, I wanted to just let you know that I, I think I've mentioned before that it, we struggle to find a time to meet in person. Um, so we're going to try and we started this week trying a weekly shorter staff huddle. Well, a very spread out huddle, but, um, meeting in person, um, for about a half an hour, um, once a week. And, you know, it doesn't give us as much time to go over as many topics. But this week, for example, we talked about COVID and we, you know, kind of had a really good in-person discussion. The people that are on site, we do have some, uh, people that aren't on site because we can't have them all at the same time in the office. So we. So we put them on laptops so they can listen in via Zoom. And then obviously, after the meeting, you know, I send out a summary so that anybody that was, you know, part-timers who aren't on duty at all get the story. So that's what we're going to be trying in terms of trying to have some in-person staff meetings, because I just think it's, it's really important. I mean, I can send 1,000 emails, but it's not as effective as just getting everybody together and having conversations. So we're trying that out. I wanted to let you know, I think this came up at our last meeting. I think Annie asked about, you know, equity training and things like that. And it just so happened, you know, the staff had been talking about the need for something like that ever since the spring. And a really good training came across my desk. So I spoke to the city manager to get permission to sign the staff up for this, and he gave it. So we're going to be doing a training called Equity in Action: Fostering an Anti-Racist Library Culture. And it's, I really like the, the format of the, the training. It's spread out over, I believe, three, I think it's three two-hour sessions, and there's like eight different topics addressed. So that the way that it will work is we'll be able to, you know, get all the staff into the community room where we can spread out. And it's an, even though it's a virtual training, it's got an interactive component, which I am excited about because so many of the trainings right now are not very interactive. So that will be happening in February, we have, end of February, March, and then two in March. And I'm really looking forward to it. All the full-time staff are participating. We can't have all the part-time staff because it's too costly. So we will just do our best to, you know, share information with the, the part-time staff. But I think it's going to be a really good exercise. You know, some of the topics are, you know, implicit bias, looking at hiring practices, looking at collections and how we think about, you know, the selections we make, et cetera. So I'm really looking forward to that and excited about it. And that is my last thing that I have to tell you. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other last comments or questions, concerns? All right. Well, then, well, thank you, everybody. Go, pretty good timing here. So I'll, I'll go ahead and then adjourn the meeting at 8:15. And thank you, everybody, and be safe. And let's hope the inauguration next week goes smoothly, and maybe the arts will come back into the United States a lot more. Good night, everybody, and thank you again.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.